Here's Uncle Tom. How you doing Derek?
Hey there and I am guilty. I am the most blessed man on the planet, have everything in life that I want, most of what I need. I'm good Jack, I'm good. And those of you just tuning in, the voice you just heard is, he calls himself Apollo, because that's really his name. But I call him, two-time heavyweight champion of the world, Apollo Creed.
What do you think of him being trained by Apollo Creed?
It's been working for me. It's been working for me. So we're gonna jump right into it tonight. Tonight, we are talking about lawsuits, or rather, the threat thereof. So there's the teaser, just to whet your appetite. Uh, let me, let me tell you where we're going with this tonight. Uh, tonight, we're gonna talk school boards. Those of you who have been following me, uh, as a media pundit on social media via Uncle Tom Talks, whatever, you know that I've gotten a little more involved in school boards as of late. I made viral history, uh, in August of last year with a speech that I gave, a three-minute speech at a school board. Didn't know that was gonna happen, but whatever, God had a plan, um, and it's worked out okay. So I've decided to insert myself more in school boards, because school boards is very important. Too many people are not involved in school board, and I still do have a school-aged child. I still have a child in the public school system here in my hometown of Colorado Springs. So I've been shot up, taking notes, and, uh, just generally speaking, being more involved. And that poses a problem for some people. Uh, unfortunately, our school board meetings have devolved into something they should not be. This, this battle, this war of words, and I addressed this at our last school board meeting, which was last Thursday night. Uh, so the school board meetings open, I assume they all follow this format, uh, I don't know that for a fact, but they open with public comments. So individuals from the community can step up to the podium and get three minutes, and in the case of our school board, Colorado Springs District 20, you get three minutes and you can say whatever you want, for the most part. And it should be focused on childhood education, it should be focused productive things. And it's become totally counterproductive. It's war, where we beat up on you, and you beat up on us, and they beat up on them. And it's just adults having a three-minute hissy fit and sitting down, and then coming back two weeks later and doing it all over again. And I got up and I said, you know, this isn't really getting us anywhere. And I maintain that. It really isn't getting us anywhere. Uh, what does it have to do with advancing childhood education? I would argue, not a lot. But before I even get there, so our school board meetings first open with a, with the Pledge of Allegiance, which is entirely appropriate. Of course, there are a lot of people who are offended by that, don't want the pledge spoken, stay, remain ceding for it, let alone stand up and put their hand over their heart. Uh, a lot of people are offended by our Pledge of Allegiance now, that's another discussion altogether. And then we open our meetings with a quote. One of the board, we have a five-member board in our school board, five board members and a superintendent, and one of them gets to read a quote. Well, our school board member who was recently elected, Aaron Salt, uh, Aaron Salt selected a quote from Benjamin Franklin to read to open our meeting last week. And I wanna show you the quote. This is the quote by Benjamin Franklin. This made the local paper, it made the local news stations were there. This made a huge stink. This quote by Benjamin Franklin, uh, Creed, let's put up image zero. And this is what, he, this is a direct quote, "A Bible and a newspaper in every house, a good school in every district, all studied and appreciated as they merit, are the principal support of virtue, morality, and civil liberty," close quote. Benjamin Franklin. So that's the quote that Mr. Salt chose to read. It's his choice. And needless to say, many on the left, uh, lost their minds, and the Freedom From Religion Foundation sent a letter trying to prevent this quote from being read. And several people who took their turn at the podium got up and read that letter from the Freedom From Religion Foundation. And essentially, what it intended to do is the Establishment Clause of the Constitution, as the reason why this letter cannot be read. So the Establishment Clause of the Constitution reads, quote, "Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof." That's what it says. "Congress shall make no law." And somehow, that was interpreted to mean a school board member cannot read a quote by Ben Franklin. Or at least not a quote that mentions the Bible. That's a stretch, in my opinion. Uh, Congress, school board, establishment of a religion, a Ben Franklin quote. But regardless where you fall on that issue, what really happens here is the disposition, a, a lot of people on the left have this disposition. Not all of them, but a lot of them. If I don't like it, if I don't want it, if I don't believe in it, or if I'm offended by it, then it should needs to go. If I don't like it, I don't want it, I don't believe in it, I'm offended by it, then nobody should see it, hear it, or experience it. It's all about my personal preferences of what I do and do not want. So people get up and say, "This board can't represent my family and can't represent my children because of this quote," and on and on and on. See, I, I don't live in that space personally. I really don't. If the board, in fact, I hope they do this. I hope a member of our board at a future meeting reads a quote by, uh, by Darwin, or by L. Ron Hubbard, or, or by some leading atheistic scholar in America today. I hope they read that quote. It's not gonna affect me one bit. I'm not gonna get up on the podium and say, "You can't represent my children and go to the ACLJ and get them to write a letter and do all this stuff to keep this quote from being read." I just don't live there. I'm a big person. I can take it. If you read a quote that I don't particularly care for, I'll just let it go in this one and out that one. I don't wanna make the fact that I don't care for that quote be the reason why you cannot hear it. I take care of me. I worry about the one person over whom I have control. Not to many on the left, to many on the left, "I don't want it, I don't believe in it," or "I'm offended by it, no one should have it." And so they raised a big stink and got Aaron Salt, you know, did everything they could to, uh, to get under his skin, because he chose that quote from Benjamin Franklin, which leads us into the topic for tonight's Uncle Tom Talks. So two school board meetings ago, there were several things read from the podium during the parental comments portion of the meeting that were just nasty, just mean-spirited and nasty. So there are people on the left in our school district, and I live in a conservative district. It very, it's a fundamentally conservative district, so it should really come as no surprise that we elected conservative representatives. The three people who campaigned as conservatives won the election and won it pretty handily. But they really haven't had a chance to do anything yet. I mean, our school board was sworn in on November 19th. That's about four months ago to the day. So they really haven't had a chance to vote on much, to enact much, to really do much in terms of policy change. But they campaigned as conservatives. They told the electorate, "This is who I am, this is what I believe," which is returning more power to the parents and the things that conservatives stand for. And so the left came and showed up at the meeting two meetings ago and just excoriated our board, just excoriated them with personal attacks. Talking about policy, talking about things the board is considering doing or has done, that's all in bounds. That's all in bounds. But when you start talking about the board members and their families and their family history, and calling them racists and homophobics and all this stuff, mean personal attacks, that's not in bounds, that's out of bounds. And so on Uncle Tom Talks last Tuesday, March 10th, I played two of the more atrocious examples of the way people get up on the podium and treat our board, our school board. Because the school board doesn't respond. They can't respond. They just have to sit there. And people take advantage of that fact to talk about them in a way that you would never talk to somebody face-to-face in an environment where they can respond. You wouldn't walk up to somebody and say this to them in a restaurant. But with the school board just having to sit there, this is what they did. So I made it a point to expose, to anybody that watches Uncle Tom Talks, just what was said, not using my words, but using the words of the people who said them. So I'm gonna replay, get cut number two ready, Creed. I'm gonna replay. Uh, I'm not gonna break it down for you. I broke it down for you March 10th. If you wanna hear my analysis of what was said, go to YouTube, put in my name, you see how to spell it right there on your screen, put in my name, uh, and you'll find my channel, and surf to the March 10th episode, and you can hear my breakdown of what we're about to hear. This is a poem that was read by somebody, uh, reading it for another person who wasn't able to attend the meeting. You tell me, and I don't care where you live ideologically, even if you're left, i- is this in bounds? Is this in keeping with being good, kind, decent human beings and treating our fellow man with dignity and respect? It is, it, it, does this, does this make it over that bar, which in my opinion is awfully low bar? At the very least, we should simply treat one another with kindness and respect. That's not asking very much. Here we go. Cut number two.
Well, hello there, board. Today is your day to sit down and meet and to greet and to say all the things that you will, all the things you believe, all the things that have given me reason to grieve. Take books, for example. I hear there's a plan, a plan that's been hatched, or perhaps it's in hand. A plan with demands from a salty old man to take books he finds ill and establish a ban. That man is a fool, and fools make dumb rules. Books are great tools, keep them in all our schools. The next silly thing the silly board wants to voice is pretending that parents do not have a choice to enter the classrooms, or talk to the teachers, or voice their concerns, even be overreacherous. The problem is not real. Shh, this board isn't either. So let's pause for a second and just all take a breather. Up next is a problem we'll see through and through. It's the way that you talk about LGBTQ. Your hate-filled rhetoric is hurtful, that's true. And all I can say is, shame on each one of you. So be better humans from here on today, cuz you're impacting lives with the words that you say. DRT is not taught, that's a dead fight, it's true, but let's chat about the past of the red, white, and blue. The history of our country is harsh, it is bad, it is full of division, power plays, it's quite sad. But that doesn't mean that we just shouldn't teach it. In fact, we should yell it and scream it and preach it. Cuz if we stay silent, come on, we won't beat it. The truth is, instead, we'll be doomed to repeat it. And finally, dear board, let us lift up these teachers. They're one-of-a-kind, almost mythical creatures. Committed to building up your kids and mine, they do it for love, they're not out here to shine. So instead of reducing their time left to plan, we should prop them all up, do whatever we can to support them and love them and make sure that they know that without them, our kids won't continue to grow. Now, in closing, dear board, so you can see clearer, pretend I am standing here holding up a mirror. Take a deep look inside it, a real nice long stare, and let's see what needs changed to show that you care.
And the affair has begun with people in the room. So one of the, the real sad things about these school board meetings, it's become us against them, us being parents, them being teachers. And that really shouldn't be. I mean, if anything, the teacher should, we should be supporting each other, the teacher should be supporting us, there are kids, there are schools. But that's the poem. And I'm not gonna break that poem down, I've already done that, uh, with the exception of the line that says, "The problem is not real. Shh, this board isn't either." What's that even mean? Yes, this board is real. They ran, they won, they won the election. Just because the people that we do not favor didn't win an election, doesn't delegitimize the ones who did win. So after all that, and talk about your hate-filled, although there's never any mention of what was actually said, there's a call for, "Let's all be better people." And what I said in my speech last week was, you know, some of these things, there are third-grade teachers in the room at this board reading. If one of your third graders had talked that way about a fellow third grader, they'd be in so much trouble. They could just say, I don't know what they do today, I'm not in the third grade, but sent to the office, letter sent home to mom and dad, this is what Johnny said about Suzie. Yet we as adults are doing this to each other, or they're doing it to us, something that a third grader couldn't get away with. So I broke that down. Again, if you wanna see it, go to YouTube, put in my name, surf to March 10th. I broke that down on my last Uncle Tom Talks, and now I've put it on the air a second time. And as a result, I received a cease and desist order. Although it's not really a cease and desist order, it's an email from an individual at, demanding me to cease and desist, to remove that YouTube from the internet and anywhere else that it may be. And that letter comes to you right now in the form of image number, which one is it, Creed? Creed, which, oh my goodness, which, I did send you this, didn't I, Creed? The actual letter?
Uh, are you talking about image one?
No, image one is a screen capture. Hang on, give me five seconds. I might have forgotten to send it to you like an idiot. Oh my goodness, this is the central part of my show. Talk about a, uh, amateurish mistake. That's okay. I'll read you the letter. Ladies and gentlemen, uh, it's, it's, it's pretty small type. You probably couldn't have seen it anyway. So I'm just gonna read you. This is the letter that was sent to me, which I thought I'd sent to my producer in prep for the show, but I'm not nearly as good at this as I like to think I am. And I did not, but that's okay. Here we go. Dear Mr. Wilburn, this is dated March, Saturday, March 19th. Dear Mr. Wilburn, not dear Mr. Wilburn. Mr. Wilburn, it has recently been brought to my attention that you have, on more than one occasion, utilized, recited, presented, leveraged, or otherwise made use of intellectual property without proper credit being or permission being sought from the owner, creator. The intellectual at hand is a poem that was written and presented at the District 20 School Board Meeting on March 3rd, 2022. That particular presentation, recital of this work, was done with expressed written permission of the author of the poem. You have since used that intellectual property, both partially and in its entirety, multiple times. It currently exists in a YouTube video entitled "How the Left Treats Our Poor Sitting Duck School Board Members," dated March 10th, 2022. The video has 84 views and is currently still available on that platform. Okay, I'll stop right there. So we're claiming a violation of intellectual property rights, this individual. This individual is not an attorney, this individual is not a lawyer, this individual signed the letter with his real name. So finding out who he is is pretty simple. And this person has no understanding of intellectual property right law whatsoever. I do. I have intellectual property. Intellectual property is protected in the United States predominantly one of four ways. Patent, copyright, trademark, trade secret. That's the way you do it. This poem has none of the above. So there is no intellectual property right claim to the work. Therefore, there is no violation of intellectual property law. Secondly, I didn't put this piece of work onto the internet. The author of the poem did. So the school board meeting was broadcast live on the web, and then it's posted a couple of days later. That it's posted a couple of days later is how I was able to just show you the live reading of the poem from March 3rd, right? So it's on the web. I didn't put it on the web. Whenever you allow something, a likeness or image of yourself to be placed on the web, your expectations of privacy are out the window. They're out the window. There was a school board meeting somewhere else, I think it was Philadelphia, I don't remember why, but a parent got up or a person got up on the podium, and they used posts that a school board member had put on her Facebook. And she was just a radical, just a flaming radical. So this parent got up and said, "Here's what you said, October 21st. Here's what you said, la 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 la." And the school board member got infuriated and said, "That's my private Facebook, it has pictures of my family," and just, and got up and walked out. But what this, what she didn't realize is, she is the one who put the pictures of her family on the internet. It's her Facebook. All the parent did was just show it on her phone. Here's what she said. When you put your images and your words onto the internet, you can't then get angry with people like me who come along, look at them, and they choose to analyze them. My August 2021 school board speech went viral in a huge kinda way. And I don't know how many hundreds, if not thousands, of private pundits, people just like me, took that thing and made it the subject of their podcast. People sent me links to dozens and dozens of them. The Officer Brandon, uh, I mean, guys, some of them got in touch with me and had me on the air to interview me. But they took that three minutes and made an entire podcast out of it. Okay, Mr. Producer, stop right there. Here's what he just said, on and on and on. I have no intellectual property rights to that speech whatsoever. I gave it at School District 49, School District 49, put it on the internet, and it became public domain property. So this individual is claiming intellectual property right violation and doesn't even know what intellectual property is. But here's the thing. The person who sent this to me, who sent me this letter, and we're not even halfway through it, I gotta hurry up, his name is Tim. I won't give his last name. Um, that's not, but my point isn't to have him getting hate mail. If Tim, or the author of this poem, or the person who read this poem, or anybody, if they'd have just reached out to me, called me on the phone, or if they didn't have my phone number, couldn't figure out, yeah, figured out my email, so he should be able to figure out my phone number, but even if they couldn't, if this would have gotten in touch with me. I said, "Hey, you know what, brother? I've got some real problems with the way you've presented this on the web, uh, on your podcast, your Uncle Tom Talks show. Could we sit down sometime, you know, let me tell you what I'm thinking and, and see if we can reach some sort of agreement or whatever?" I would have said, "Of course." And I'm perfectly reasonable. I'm not some raving, you know, boy, well, I'm not what, what the conservatives are. Would have reached out to me and said, "Hey Derek, I watched your podcast and I find some things about it disturbing. Would you be willing to meet with me one day? Uh, I'll pay for coffee, and we can, we can chop this up a little bit?" I would have said, "Tell me when and where." Absolutely. But that's what they did. Instead, they sent me this cease and desist use of intellectual property phony letter. Continuing the letter. There is reason to believe it has been used on the following platforms as well. Audible, Rumble, DLive, Twitch, Apple Podcasts, Podbean, Telegram. So any competent attorney would have just looked on Audible, Rumble, DLive, et cetera, to see is it archived, is it there as well? But this person, who isn't an attorney, so, you know, an attorney just would have signed a paralegal to it, said, "Hey, do some surfing, see where else on the internet, this Uncle Tom Talks podcast from three, from 3:10:22, see where else it's available." This person didn't do that. They said, "It may also be available somewhere else too." Just amateur. It is required that you immediately cease and desist all such uses of this intellectual property without proper credit being given, or without the expressed written consent of the owner and creator of the property. If you fail to comply with the aforementioned demands within seven days, we will have no choice but to pursue all legal course of action, including, but not limited to, the filing of a lawsuit to protect our interests. What interests? If this is truly intellectual property from which you are receiving compensation, you can demonstrate that there is financial interest, then you could reasonably say somebody using that property without permission and realizing financial interests themselves, so I'm profiting somehow, you could reasonably expect a court of law to say that I owe you some money for the use of your property. The person who wrote this poem isn't being paid. There's no, who would pay for that, first of all? We remind you that this letter serves as a pre-suit notice for a lawsuit against you, and failing to correct will likely make you liable for any damages the court determines we have suffered, as well as liable for any damages the court determines we have suffered as a result of your infringements, including any reasonable legal and attorney's fees. I don't know who "we" is. And I'd have no idea what kinda financial damage they think they are able to demonstrate, but they can't, cuz there aren't any. Not to mention, and I returned, I replied to this letter, and I told them, "Look, I've been sued. I have both sued and been sued." I know this game pretty well. Anyone can go to any search engine, put in Alan West, my name, Derek Wilburn, Alan West, Alex Jones, uh, we, I just was, just settled a lawsuit last year with an angry, offended liberal who didn't like something that I wrote and sued us in, in Virginia. So I've played this game before. A, you have no lawsuit. B, you've really hosed it up, because now the video you want taken down is gonna get more views than it already had, probably triple. B, I just put it on the air again, when all you had to do was just call me up and say, "Can we talk about this?" Instead of this fake threat. It's number two. You don't serve notice of a lawsuit via email. That's not admissible. Okay, all a person has to do is show up in court and say, "I never got it. I didn't see it." Yeah, but you replied, that wasn't me. Somebody replied on my behalf. I don't even know what you're talking about. It's called process service. You hire a process server and pay them to serve the defendant with your legal action. That is admissible, or you can do it via other forms of certified post, USPS, FedEx, uh, whatever. Not only that, this person is flirting with impersonating an attorney. This is pretty close to the line. Colorado, uh, CRS 18-5-13 is called Criminal Impersonation. And I'm not gonna get into it, but when you start sending people letters threatening legal action in this manner, you're, you're, you're close. A competent attorney, an attorney who's really hungry, who really wants a paycheck, could pick that ball up and run with it, and maybe even win. But the person who sent me this, well, let me go back. So the person who wrote the poem wasn't actually there, uh, on the night it was read, had somebody read it for him, is a United States servicemember, and I don't know him personally, I don't think that I do. I don't think I know the person who sent me this email informing me that there's a lawsuit coming my way. Uh, I know his name, I've seen his picture, uh, I don't know if we actually know each other, I don't think so. I suppose it's possible that we've met. Uh, but the guy who wrote this is a servicemember in the United States, I believe he's in the Air Force. Lot of respect. He has my respect right there. He's a left-winger, and I believe would, would admit to being a left-winger. Uh, and there's nothing wrong with that, it just means we disagree philosophically on several things. And there's nothing wrong with that either. Disagreement is good. Disagreement is healthy. We need disagreement. But this individual, and hey, my son serves in the Air Force, as most of you know, graduated from the United States Air Force Academy, which is right over there, about five miles. Uh, graduated in 2018, and to this day, he flies this jet right here. Which side of man? Left is right, right is left. That is a KC-135. He flies that jet for the United States Air Force. I got mad respect for anyone and everyone who wears the flag of the United States of America on their sleeve in service to this country, in our military forces. So the guy that wrote that poem, I don't like that poem, I think it is nasty, I think it's across the line, but that doesn't change the fact that he puts on the uniform every day and is deserving of my respect for doing that, and he has it. But this individual and his spouse, they come to the school board meetings and they just, they come across as so angry. Yeah, just angry, just, and most of it's all LBGTQ stuff, and, and you aren't doing this for the yake queer community, and just blasting our board every other week. And I'd like to put a call out to everybody, no matter which side of the ideological rift you fall on. Let's all stop that. I said last week that I'm gonna stop it, and I am. Just getting up there and blasting people I disagree with, just getting up there and blasting people you disagree with. What does it have to do with improving childhood education? Very, very little. So I don't think that poem was helpful. I think it was harmful, I think it was hateful. I think the person who wrote it and the person who read it both owe our school board members a sincere I think the person who wrote it and the person who read it both owe our school board members a sincere apology for the way that they treated them. But this third individual, Tim, who decided to email me a cease and desist order, that's way over the line. Uh, that, that, first of all, I, I'm the wrong guy you want to try that with. I have attorneys. I'm the executive director of a nonprofit with a, with a very powerful board of directors. Some of the people on my board of directors, if I were to name them, uh, most of you watching would know exactly who they are. I've got them in Washington DC. I mean, I don't, I don't play this, I'm going to sue you game. Particularly when it's unnecessary. If your only problem is a podcast, just talk to me. See, what, what lefties believe about righties is that we're filled with hate. We're bigots. We can't stand anyone who's queer. They, they think that we're just unreasonable to the core, which may be true of some right wingers, but not me and not most of the right wingers that I know. I would never in a million years get up in front of our school board at the podium, look at the liberal member of our school board. We have one who's decidedly to the left. Her name is Heather. I would never get up there and blast her on a personal level in a million years. Wouldn't do it. A, I don't know her well. B, I'm a decent human being. Decent human beings don't do that to one another. And C, I like Heather. She's perfectly reasonable. Uh, I, I disagree with a lot of her positions, but as I've already said, there's nothing wrong with that. I like her a lot. She, she's wonderful person, communicates extraordinarily well, clearly cares about childhood education, invests a lot of time into our local schools and puts up slides about the things that she's done and gives credit where it's due to teachers and students alike. She's a very, very good school board member. She's just a liberal. I'm not mad at her for that. Probably won't vote for her if, if given the opportunity, but that doesn't mean that I have to dislike her. The left isn't like that. They cannot stand our conservative school board members, even though they don't rule them. And one of the things that I said last week to the people in our, on the left who come to our school board meetings and blast our members, school board members as being racist, bigoted pigs. How many of you have ever reached out to Aaron Salt? The, the one who brought the Benjamin Franklin quote? How many have ever reached out to him, the way I said this individual should reach out to me? How many of you have ever reached out to him and said, you know, Mr. Salt, don't know you, don't agree with a lot of your positions? Can we get together sometime? I'll buy coffee. Can, can you take a look at your calendar? Let me know what works for you. Let's pick a day and just sit down one-on-one or one-on-two or one-on-three. There's three or four of us, just like to sit with you and find out what makes you tick. Have you ever done that? The answer is no. They've never done that. They just come to the school board meetings, sit there and blast away, calling him a pig, calling him bigot, calling him a racist, talking about his family, talking about his whatever. Go home, come back two weeks later, do it again. So when I come along and say, you know what? If that's what you're going to do, fine. I have a podcast. I'll let the whole world see what you do. And apparently they don't want the whole world to see what they do. They don't want the whole world to hear what they say because they send me a phony cease and desist in an effort to get me to take their words off the internet. Well, here's an idea. If you didn't want your mean nasty three-minute-long screed to become public domain property, maybe you shouldn't have written or read it in the first place. Maybe the problem isn't me reading your words. Maybe the problem is your words. Ever think about that? Now, the individual who sent me, I told you, his name is Tim. Uh, Tim who sent me this indivi, this, 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 Tim is a clearly extraordinarily far to the left. Look up his Facebook. All you see on his Facebook is white privilege, racism, 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 white privilege, white privilege, racism, everything. I have several screen captures here. I hadn't decided whether or not I was going to put his screen captures up. I think I won't because they meant to have both his picture, his first and last name. And I don't want to do that to this man because I don't know him. And he lives here in the community and a decent person doesn't do that to another person.
And just to clarify, we're not trying to dox this person. We're not trying to have anyone be aggressive. We just want what he said to be known.
Well put. Yeah, I don't want to dox him and I could have pixelated his name and picture, but I didn't. So I'm just going to read a couple of his posts from his Facebook. White privilege, white privilege, racism protocol. Quote, "I don't know what it's like to feel like the other in America. Not in school, in church, in a store, on the streets, on a field. Nope. It's super easy for me to arrange to be comfortable, comfortably surrounded by my race pretty much most of the time." Meby once said to me, so I think he and his wife are white. Uh, they've adopted black children apparently and kudos for that. Once said to me, Daddy, every time we're in class and they teach about MLK Jr. or somebody else black, everybody turns and looks at me. She's right. It is weird. And what a total privilege of mine it is that I have never had to experience what that feels like. Close quote. Well, I am black. My children went to District 20 schools. One still does. I was taught about MLK Jr. in school and Carver and, and several other prominent black figures, Harriet Tubman. I don't remember everyone turning around and looking at me, but if that's what his daughter says happened, okay. I mean, who am I to, I wasn't there. Privilege, quote, "Privilege and supremacy over the last couple of centuries have ensured that I am taught over and over again that white people built this great nation." Quote, "Great nation." The truth is, it was established for people that look like me on the backs of people who don't look like me. Our white privilege has kept us from ever really having to study, learn, or accept and acknowledge that. But here's to hoping that changes soon. And on every one of these, there's some sort of priv meme. There's dozens of these. Quote, "I've never had to worry about being followed or harassed or even questioned when I entered a store of any kind, but my black friends have. I've witnesses and I've watched myself be treated fairly and them not when entering stores together. I've always gone into stores with the full privilege of not having to worry or wonder what the employees or store owners are thinking about me. That is privilege." Close quote. And he's some more about his daughter going to a store and how the store people ignore the white friends, but focus on the daughter. I walk in and out of stores literally every day of my life. I've never been harassed. It's funny to me how white people, so people like this, they find racism in everything because they look for racism in everything. And this I am going to show because this isn't the Joe, Tim who sent me these things. This is from a Facebook post of mine years ago, back when I was on Facebook. This is image number seven. Image number seven. Forget the lighting, by the way. It's kind of dark in here today. I know that I've got a burned out lamp. Let me know when you got it, Creed.
Can you say that one more time?
Number seven. All right. So this was taken at the Western Conservative Summit. That is me right there in the middle. Well, one over from the right, that's myself, my buddy Casper on the right from Denver. Mike Jones with his hand around my shoulder, good friend of mine, lives in Briargate, is a District 20 parent. Next to him is James Golden, the big guy with the, the reversed, uh, hat on. What do you call those kinds of hats? Beret?
A beret. Is that, is that Mike Jones, Mike Jones?
Yeah, that's Mike Jones. And James Golden.
A rapper, Mike Jones?
No, 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 no. No, my friend Mike is not a rapper to the best of my knowledge. But James Golden with the backward beret, a lot of people don't know this. Some do. That's Mr. Snurdly. Instant to Rush Limbaugh, even one time you hear him talking, you heard him talking, rest in peace. You heard him talking to his off-camera producer. You never saw him, but you heard him refer to Snurdly for 21 years. James with Rush from day number one. Rush made him a multimillionaire and never mentioned on the air that he's black. Because it doesn't matter. He's good at his job. That's both Snurdly, James Golden. I actually talked to him the day before yesterday. He lives in Florida, friend of mine. That's James. And next to him on the right is K. Carl Smith. K. Carl Smith is the founder of the Frederick Douglass Coalition. K. Carl lives in St. Louis. So there we are at the Western Conservative Summit. Somebody took our picture. I put it on Facebook. Read on the right. This is what Henry Waxman responded to this picture. I don't know Henry Waxman. I'm not worried about doxing him. I have no idea where he lives. He could live in France for all I know is Facebook. Compromised Negroes. Show me the black community, the constituents they represent. Where is the ground roots support for these black men? I'm betting 80% of them of non-blocks, of non-black spouses and are outcasts within their own families. A good friend of mine gave me a book that explains these men and their motives. And there's the image of the book. Okay. So this is Waxman is clearly a far left-leaning liberal. That's what he has to say about a group of black men who simply don't fit his expectation. Okay, so we don't think the way that he believes we ought to. Therefore, this, I love all minorities liberal gives himself permission to call us and say all those nasty things about us. The individual who sent me this cease and desist email has a Facebook filled with nothing but anti-racism, white privilege, racism is everywhere, white privilege, white privilege, white privilege posts. Dozens of them. It's, it's, it's like it's all he cares about. And hey, if that's what you care about, if that's what you're passionate about, okay. But now here he is, a white guy pretending to be an attorney and sending me a, a phony cease and desist letter. And I'm the black guy. So he's trying to curb my First Amendment rights. The white guy using his privilege to try to shut down the black guy's free speech rights simply because he didn't like what I said. And I emailed him back and said, brother, you want to talk about who needs to look in the mirror? You need to look in the mirror. Okay, so are you fine? And are you pro-black and anti-racism and pro-people of color and all the stuff you claim to be on your Facebook? Only toward those blacks with whom you have ideological agreement? Like this Waxman fellow? But the rest of us, if we don't think the way you think we ought to think, if we don't vote the way we, you think we ought to vote, if we don't behave the way you think we ought to behave, then do you give yourself the green light to berate us? Vilify us? Send us phony cease and desist letters on email? Do you give yourself the green light to do that to blacks simply who do not fit into your box? And then have the nerve to stand up in a school board meeting and accuse the school board members of doing the exact same thing you just did? That was the District 20 School Board Meeting last week. Last week and two weeks ago. Our board meets every other week, actually on the first and third Thursday of every month. And more and more parents are showing up. And like I said, it is really sad that our school board has become us against them, parents against teachers. But that should tell you a lot. That should tell you a lot. I'm a District 20 parent. I believe there are some things that are my responsibility, not the government's, not the public school systems. Teaching my children about human sexuality is not the role of the school. That's my job. Now, if you disagree with that statement, if you think, yes, there's a place for this in schools and we need to have it in schools. If that's your belief, okay. I don't hate you. I'm not mad at you. We disagree on that point. Let's work together on a solution where both sides win. But not the left. The left is, if I don't like it, if I don't want it, if I don't believe in it, if I'm offended by it, we need to shut it down so nobody can even hear it. And if that means I have to send you a cease and desist letter, even though I'm not an attorney, then that's what I'm going to do. And this end racism warrior sent me the letter I just read to you all because I got on the internet and said some things about his own words. Actually, I don't think they're his words. Probably a friend, this, this, this gentleman in the Air Force. All because they don't like the way I analyzed what they themselves said. I don't see where I'm out of bounds. But I do see where they're out of bounds. A, with this mean, nasty, disgusting poem for which our school board is owed an apology. And B, for this cease and desist letter that I was sent in the guise of it having some sort of legal weight when in fact it's just a guy in the community, a personal trainer, a fitness professional, which I am myself. Many of you know. You don't get these sitting around eating sweet potatoes. This has been Uncle Tom Talks. There will not be an Uncle Tom Talks on Thursday. My family and I, it's spring break. Thank the Lord. And my family and I are on a jumbo jet airplane tomorrow. We're going to head down to Arizona. Get some sunshine. I already have tickets to go see the Chicago Cubs Spring Ball. Everyone who knows me knows that I am a Chicago Cubs fan. My dad took me to my first Cubs game when I was 10 months old. So it's in the blood. My dad will be 95 in two weeks, by the way. Uh, so we've been Cubs fan. I've been sitting, watching Cubs with my dad since I was old enough to sit up and watch TV. So we're going to go to Mesa and take in some Chicago Cubs Spring Ball and just detox for the rest of the week. I will see you a week from tonight on Uncle Tom Talks. Apollo Creed, defending two-time heavyweight champion of the world. Take us out.